We're ready. All right, good morning everyone. Today's date is Monday, August 23rd, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. First item on our agenda is pledge allegiance and then invitation led by Timmy Kellum.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance. Good Father, we come to this morning to worship you and thanks for the mercy, the grace, your daily bread and our help. Lord, I want to lift up our leaders this morning of our government. Just be with them as they go through these hard times, Lord. And Lord, we lift up our military, our local law enforcement, and our employees. Lord, be with our people that have contracted COVID. Lord, just help them with the coverage. And Lord, and be with their family members also these times are going tough. And Lord, just have the Holy Spirit guide us with these agenda items and help us to make better decisions for the children. My Lord, help us as we go through this day. My Lord, we're reminded of 2 Timothy 1:7. God gave us in spirit not a fear, but a power and love and self-approving. And Lord, we pray in your most precious name.
All right, the first item is to approve our minutes. So do you hear meeting of August 9th, special meeting of August 6th and August 13th, and public meeting of August 16th? We've all had a copy of those. Do I hear a motion that we approve those as written?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. All right. Next item we have is from our auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Okay, my first item are, I've got a couple of budget amendments. The first one is a budget amendment for Precinct 4 to recognize unbudgeted revenue in the amount of $3,070. And this is for repair to his doors and the labor due to the hot winds at his precinct.
All right, you've heard the budget amendment for Precinct 4 on insurance recovery, an amount of $3,070. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget amendment? I'll make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
My next budget amendment is for Precinct 4 insurance recoveries of $3,070. And this is to recognize unbudgeted expense to pay for the repair of the doors and the labor due to the hot winds. And the actual amount was $4,070, but there is a $1,000 deductible that we paid out of equipment maintenance.
Okay, this is the expense side of that revenue from Precinct 4 insurance recovery to the amount of $3,070. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
My next item is to discuss and allow the county judge to electronic sign the fiscal year 2022 victim notifications, state automated victim notification system, grant contract between the office of the Attorney General in Hill County. And GM does currently have this agreement to review, but once he does, I'm asking that I should allow the county judge, a agreement allow the county judge to sign that.
All right, to discuss or once GM sends back the agreement from the Attorney General's office in the buying program, if you would approve that grant and allow me to sign that contract electronically between Hill County and the Attorney General's office. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
My next item is to amend the general accounting policies and procedures. And on Friday, I kind of went over this with y'all. And I'm just asking that on page 36, and it's under section 6 of the personal vehicle reimbursement, what we allow for reimbursement mileage between cities, and I'm adding city to city, is computed utilizing the molly calculator, Bramble Valley Shortest Distance, which we did. So I'm just asking that you put in the policy. And thank you all for your approval.
All right.
For your business.
So we have a request to amend the general accounting policies and procedures as Melinda has explained to us regarding the mileage. Do I hear a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
My last item is also to amend the Hill County operating policies and the same thing. It's just the, this one is on page 29 and under section 7 of the personal vehicle, under B, mileage between cities, city to city, is computed utilizing the www.bramblevalley.com shortest distance. I'm just asking that you approve and sign that as well.
Okay, you've heard the request of this auditor. This is basically the same thing, only according to our Hill County operating policies. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, thank you. I want to skip down and let Phyllis Wall come up.
He's got two minutes.
Sorry.
It's okay. He's the boss, I guess.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Thank you for hearing us this day. The first thing that I want to talk about is the Hill County Historical Commission and a county location for us to move the historical collection to the office, equipment, or I guess furniture to that location. And we discussed this, and so I just wanted to bring it to you for verification and decision, I guess.
All right. Heard from Phyllis and White. Saw some pictures of stuff, so do I hear a motion to allow the Historical Society to move? And if so, does anyone have a suggestion? Phyllis, you've been in there looking at that building?
I haven't looked at anything, Kenny. I don't. I mean, I've been in that particular building that we've discussed, but I, it's been a while.
I'm not sure exactly how big a space you'll need.
Okay.
I think maybe the office endeavor which is in might be sufficient, but at some point down the road, I just need to go there, let you look at it and make sure something will work for you and then go from there would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that'll be great, whatever we need to do on that. And I guess it's mainly, I guess, just that we can move from the museum to a county location. Is that what needs to be determined this morning and then we can look?
You'll get one of us and just kind of give us time. Have you taken a look to it?
I've also asked Jesse to check over the two locations, see if there's any offices on the bottom floor.
That would be great, but I know for me things are used.
Okay.
To be honest with you, but we can look at it.
Well, if that would work, I think it'd work better because you've got that big conference room where you're talking admissions and stuff. If not, we'll there.
We more like that.
Over there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so any other questions of Phyllis about this location? Do I hear a motion to allow the Hill County Historical Society to relocate a county office?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. All right. And then item B is in regards to Christmas decor at the courthouse and the light Christmas tree location. Before we get started, I will tell you that I did not have a chance to visit with GM Friday about the Christmas tree. So that may be something we'll have to return to after we visit with him.
Okay. On the Broadway and Courthouse Christmas decor, I guess what we would need maybe is an agreement with you all, which we've always had to work with the courthouse on, you know, the pole, the lit poles that are going to be out there and being able to light those. And we're working currently on getting outlets on all of the light poles. But just that agreement that we can work with you all and that you all will work with downtown and whatever it is that we determine, and then we can come back if you can, details, if we get to the lighting and all of that, we can get back with you all the details. But mainly today, just an agreement that you will work with us on those and I guess paper the power that's on the light poles that the courthouse wear, I guess, which you've always done when we've had them.
And just to clarify, now, as far as the Christmas tree, like you had on the courthouse last year, there's no problem with that. I was referring to.
Right, you're talking about what Doris did with you about on the vendor part.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to just like have her come back on that another time?
Let's table that.
Okay.
And I'll visit with GM and then I'll power it.
Okay. I don't think there will be, you know, any problem. We can work it out some way on that, so.
Okay.
Phyllis, Ken, I want to thank you guys for what you do. You know, y'all do more than people realize and try to take care of down and whatnot. I really appreciate the work they did out here around the mountain cleaning it up. It looks so much better.
Thank you. We have another project for next year's operations surgery, all day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
We got people involved. There's just a lot to do.
Thank you.
All right, so do I hear a motion that we will enter agreement to work with the downtown association as far as our Christmas decor and the Christmas tree locations here on the grounds? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Cornell. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. We appreciate you.
All right, Ida.
Thank you, Judge. I know I could be.
I didn't say you're the last.
Yeah, that's true. All right, we got it. I didn't. No problem. Maybe do this without dropping everything. All right, my first item, Judge, is going to be.
They broke us the hour.
Oh, I guess. Okay. So first item on half is going to be the request to place House Bill 2073, which is quarantine leave for police officers, actually law enforcement, basically in general, also the, that includes like the nurse, pretty much everybody in the sheriff's office. And this is what, I did make a copy, one copy of the House Bill that I was going to pass around the insert that I'm going to be putting. And the first paragraph is the only thing that matters because then the rest is definition. The rest is definition for the definition for the.
That's true.
House Bill. I mean, for exposition that it covers. So I'm asking the court to allow me to place that in the personnel policy. This will be, we noticed this, is it, that's a word I can't pronounce, community, but is it communicable?
Communicable.
Yeah, which is anything. I think they made a broad enough so it includes more than just COVID.
Okay. All right, so we've talked about this on Friday. This is House Bill 2073 approved by the last legislative session, goes into effect on September 1st in regards to paid leave for police officers, detention officers, and emergency medical technicians.
Okay, I do want to highlight the last sentence, Judge, it has to be.
That off-duty exposure will not be covered.
Correct.
So basically, this regards to quarantine leave for those individuals while they are serving home duty. Actually, it's for the deputies and the jailers, and then like she said, even the nurse out of the jail would follow under this. I'm assuming the constables would follow under this.
Yes, any life officer.
Anybody that goes out as police officer, deputy.
My security guy, so they come.
Well, actually, they work in services, so. All right. Any questions of this?
Why not? We're having our discussion. And this off-duty exposure will not be covered. How are you gonna?
Determine.
Determine.
Okay, this is what I was.
If you got a street police officer out, doing somebody elderly.
Okay, this is what I was told to y'all. It was that it becomes a workers' comp issue then, and it's not up to us, workers' comp people will figure that out. So basically, this came about with the incident with Lynn County Sheriff who passed away. So they kind of are trying to go back and kind of hopefully correct those situations.
I would think if you, this would apply Harold in those cases, like if they were on vacation or, you know, several days off and things like that. Otherwise, it'd be really difficult to go back and correct it. When or where you contracted it and something.
True that.
Anyway, any other questions? Do I hear a motion to allow Ida to place this in our policy book in regards to our police officer, detention officers, and emergency technicians? I'll make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second? I'll second. Second by Commissioner Kelly. Also, I stand corrected, reading on this, it was effective when it was paid and so.
I believe it's September 1st.
Okay.
September 1st, because of that thing.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay. Judge, my next item is going to be the Hill County 2022 County Choice Silver Retirement Medical Program. We currently have three people on this, and this is our first time utilizing the coverage. So I just wanted to, I need the judge's signature, so in the motion that he will include, for judge to sign this agreement. And the rates for last year, let me see. Okay, the senior supplement F, Plan F, was 275.83, and it's going to 264. And then the, excuse me, the plus RX option 1 was $276.18, and that one will be 354.11. Okay? So I'm asking the court to approve the 2022 plan, and I'll pass 21 down just in case y'all want to go ahead and set the rates and allow the judge to sign the document.
Okay, you've heard the explanation from Ida on this silver, County Choice Silver Retirement Medical Plan and the expenses that we will have with this. Do I hear a motion to approve this package and these rights?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? I'll second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
Okay, Judge, my next item is to reclassify the security monitor employees out at the Justice Center. Last year, or the years before, and if my mind serves me correctly, we hired them at $8 an hour, and I believe at that point the wage was 2735 as current. And so through the years, we have two individuals that are there, and one of them started in 2010, and the other one started in 2012, okay? And they were placed as unclassified, and I'm not sure why, but they were not put on the, because they were not put on the pay group. And I'm asking the court to allow me to replace them in the next year's budget and classify them as a pay group 10-1. That would be 1340 an hour, and they both worked 20 hours a week. So I'm going to ask the court to approve, to raise those two individuals to a pay group 10-1 at 1340. And I've placed, I've also marked down on my, my document who they are and how much they were being paid, but I just want the court to realize what we're doing there. And that's just to bring them back to, just to put them in the lowest pay group starting 10-1, and with no six months and no year rates.
Okay, you've heard the request on the security monitors. This will be in effect on January 1st of 2022. He'll bring them into a pay group 10-1 or 1340 per hour. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion?
Is that giving them a raise for this year?
Well, it'll be next year.
Not this year. For next year. It's all, yeah, it's all for next year.
No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, my next item, Judge, is the financial statement for the month ending June 30th of 2021. Make sure I gave y'all the net. Does anybody want to come?
We're stuck together.
Okay. I've got too much paperwork, guys. Okay, this is for the month ending June 30th of 2021. I hereby, I'm sorry, let me go back to the total monthly closing balance. I'm out of words this morning, I apologize. Twenty-six million, one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. I hereby certify that this report is true and correct and request that you place a new minutes.
All right, you've heard the request and the heating balance for the month ended June 30th of 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, Judge, the next item is the affidavit to state that our places in the newspaper saying that the court has received review and approved the financial report version of various 2021.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the affidavit to be placed in Cleveland? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion?
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
Okay, this is the investment portfolio for the quarter ending June 30th. If I could get you to go to page 3. And on the second paragraph, it says the amount overall interest is $7,481.88. I apologize, that kind of shocked me there. To, for the whole quarter, for that one particular quarter, I just want the court to realize that's for the second quarter, $7,481.88.
And that's on 12 million, huh?
Uh, no, sir. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's the ICS investments that I invest with the bank. That's the sweeping accounts, basically, is what it is. And this one, Judge, I don't need you on this side, the committee's going to sign, which is myself, Carol, and Melinda.
Okay. You've heard the request from Ida in regards to our investment portfolio for the quarter ending June 30th. Quarter million dollars incurred, overall interest total of $7,481.88.
Yeah, for a quarter.
So do I hear a motion to approve this investment?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel.
I will abstain. I will.
All right, Carol would abstain, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Okay, Judge, I'd like to point out page number 6, just for y'all to look at. That's both quarters plus the combined amount together for the year is $19,172.84. Okay? Trying to bring your focus up to the spirit.
Just working a person, not 15 years back, we would look at it on those investments making around $900,000 a year.
Yes, sir. Back in the, I started Treasury in 99, so back in the day, yes, we.
Now, we're looking at $30,000 a year.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Yes, sir. It's hard to make money on pennies. Pennies as far as interest. We got money, don't get me wrong. But, yes. Okay, so we're good there. The next item, and I thank y'all for having patience with my department, but. We're caught up, guys, and I appreciate your patience, but this is reported for the month ending July 31st of 2021. It's the financial statement, bank where facilitations for all those accounts. It's the financial statement, bank regulations for all those accounts. Sir, I knew there was one left over. Okay. I support you approve this financial report July, ending July 31st of 2021. The monthly closing balance is $25,243,973.11. I hereby certify that this report is true, correct and request that you place a new minutes.
You asked me. Have we gained a business earlier?
Oh, okay. I used to get in trouble for saying those numbers too fast.
All right. Yeah, you've heard the financial statement for the month ending July 31st of 2021. You know, closing balance of $25,243,973.11. Do I hear a motion that we approve this financial statement?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Can I use a report that our employee, we have been, can we have a pretty good look?
Yes sir, if you look at the July one on. On page five.
It's on page two, the third one.
Well, I can't open this.
We got a little over a million dollars.
Yes sir, yes. And I will say that I got an email stating that we've got about ninety. Don't quote me on this now. We got a good size check, haven't for a stop loss. We made the stop loss very early in the year. So we are definitely doing very well here.
Well, we've had a good year.
Yes. Okay, the affidavit, okay, this is the affidavit just stating that the court has received reviewed and approved the financial report to be placed in the newspaper.
All right, you've heard the request on the July 31st on the affidavit to be published in the paper. Do I hear a motion to approve this affidavit?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay Judge.
All righty, thank you.
All right.
All right, next item we have is in regards to my items. The first one I had, I believe y'all approved this last time on the re glass, last storage for my office, but they resubmitted proposals because of the price case. And so the new, the new. Well, let me just give you the information then on the new price. On my door, it was $1,705.97. That includes the door rail and the service column. Then on the one outside of the door that leads into the hallway that leads into lobby in front of Rossell's office, the price on that one was $3,727.22. The difference in it is it will have a locking device so that show files will be fine, such as they have over at the Justice Center. And so those are the new prices. I didn't, I wouldn't hear from the last court, but I do know that, I believe those were approved.
They were and I'm sure we discussed it Judge. Where did we determine the monies come in front of that? From the improvements or the?
From the improvements or, I paid part out of my budget and I have some money in there. Okay. And then there's also a door, I don't know if these have been approved or not. Or the juvenile probation office over here. The south door in the amount of $4,306.15.
Have we approved those, I understand?
Yes sir.
They were approved, but then Deborah requested that the actual button for the handicap be put on the north side instead of on the south side. So that's why they were resubmitted with such a slight increase on the price. Instead of having it on the north side, they wanted, instead of having it on the south side, they wanted it on the north side. That's where all the price come in from.
And that makes sense.
Okay, and then the price on the north door, $7,856.15. And so I guess that's just for information since those have already been approved. Will be no action on those. Second.
Judge, if there's change in price, then you all need to approve that.
Okay.
If there's a change in.
There is a change in price. Yes sir, it went up a little bit.
Okay, all right, it's on the north door?
Yes sir.
Okay. So on the north door, the price came in at $7,856.15. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, and then the last item that I have is in regards to medical arms for juvenile probation, adult probation and the other juvenile school, which I'm assuming that makes Coronado?
Sir?
That's the old Coronado?
Yes, yes, J.J.A.P.
All right, then there's a, this is coming from Professional Arms System Services or PSS and the total amount was $13,085. I think we'll have to send discount out of the security.
Because these are the padding buttons, right?
Yes.
All of these?
The padding buds, which includes the master board for the J.J.A.P. and the Portland Street juvenile building. Because they never had padding buds, so they have to install the master box and then wire it, then that padding buds will work.
But it's all in regards to padding buds, so.
Okay, well it'll come out of Department of Security.
Okay.
And they're also requesting that half be paid, half down be paid. So you'll need to approve that in your motion.
Okay. So you've heard the request, do I hear a motion? And if your motion will reflect that, we can go ahead and take half of the invoice before they start.
I'll make that motion Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then the last item on the agenda today is Emergency Management Coordinator for PPE. And just for the record, PPE is Personal Protection Equipment.
Good part is I'm not requesting anything. I mostly wanted to give you a quick update. Took inventory on our PPE and it was very low, so I requested from TDM, Texas Emergency Management Department to resupply our PPE, which I'm fairly sure that they will do that. And I primarily wanted to be proactive instead of reactive, so I'm trying to get at least a three-month supply so it will be in the, things heat up then we'll be ready for it. Along that same line, the other thing I wanted to throw out at the court was, was that PPE is very important. And so we all know washing your hands, sanitizing and staying six feet or four away is the most common solution to prevent it. But at the same time, we want to go one step further and so I'll give kudos to Carter Cannon. She went out and bought 35 of those Ryobi foggy machines and they worked great, that was a great idea. They sprayed more of a wet spray, which we can't use on computers, monitors, keyboards, electronic equipment. Am I right on that so far?
You're right.
So we talked about it and I'm throwing out an idea, not requesting it, but one more layer of protection, one more level of security feeling is perhaps we could consider temperature sensors in all the county buildings. That way we would, you wouldn't need a person to sit there and monitor it, which they would be within six feet. You just walk in there, it's either wall mounted or tripod mounted. I looked at a couple of them, they run between $60 to $100 plus or minus depending on what we look at. That's one thing to consider. What got me to thinking about this is with elections coming up, I believe we have 15 polling stations. So in talking to Latrice Kim, she came up with the idea, I believe that's where it came from, by UV wands. And a UV wand is ultraviolet ray. The amount of money on that, and I've done a little bit of research, I'm just throwing it out for food for thought and that is, is depending on which kind of UV light you have and the best one is the UVC, which kills germs. Will it kill the COVID, depends on which article you read. It's another layer of protection. And she was thinking, we had 15 of those for the polling stations, that would be great because it's all electronic. We're not going to use them that much, but then the second train of thought there is, we do that, we can also distribute them to all the different departments, precincts, et cetera, et cetera, where they would have a UV wand. We can use the common sense approach and the de-fogging or disinfecting machines and have that UV wand for disinfect. In order for it to be as efficient as possible, you have to get the one that has the UVC, if I'm not, if I'm saying correctly. They run about $387, $390 each. Wanted to inform the court to give that some thought. If we decide to go that route, I would suggest we just buy one or two so that we can actually see if they're going to be as effective as we think they're going to be. Any comments input?
Is the stuff readily available or is it something in special order?
Good point, it would be a special order and at this point, again back to being retroactive, there will. As y'all recall, a year and a half ago, you were hard pressed to buy just about any item related to what we're talking about. So right now, yes they are available.
That's why when Carla wanted to buy the machines, you know, we went ahead and did that because what I'm afraid is going to happen is if we get to that point, then they're not going to be available for us to purchase.
Yes sir.
And so I do think the thermometer readers would be a good investment, a minimal investment for, for the buildings.
The temperature?
Temperature.
At our building, the district judge has asked that everybody before they come in and I think that he got that from the OCA.
Okay.
That they're telling the courts to start.
That's mandatory, would you say?
Yes.
You know, Judge, people are for their own opinions about a lot of this kind of information. We don't really know what's accurate, what's not accurate. You read one thing from one report from another. It's the same with the vaccine. A lot of people took it, I took it, a lot of people were better than they can say. All this PPE equipment, some of it, in my opinion, is very good. You know, especially if you're around crowds on airports, taking masks. You know, when you can try them too, it blows down the common sense. And you know, washing your hands is the biggest one and the fenster is from everything I've read, the medical people I've talked to. I don't know at what point, I mean, when do you stop? You know, the wands, they, they probably work. If you, if you really work at it, hold on, that one off here. It's not like something, people have an opinion, you're just going to wipe things over that, your keyboard's going to be sterilized. I don't think it is. But we can look at it and if there's places that they would like to have it, I'm not opposed to having it, but I'm sure that would be in favors. You know, just buy them, log them.
I'm in agreement with Kenny because I don't want to try somebody, somebody that is slightly, people wanting to come in straight to courthouse for COVID. And straight for COVID and then 30 minutes later after they leave, all the germs and all that back down on top of one of the reading boxes in the community to make this come in. They said, it's all really good, but you still got to wash your hands and do all that. I'm not going to deny what you think, but going and get crazy.
Jesse, I do appreciate you looking upfront and trying to get us some more of those supplies because they could get hard to get.
Yeah.
And sir, I did check into the, how long, how long do you have to sanitize with the ultraviolet light? And in my reading that I've done over the weekend is with the UVC light, it only takes five, eight seconds to scan over your keyboard, over your monitors, over.
Is that people that you're reading?
Uh, no, no, actually I went to Consumer Reports and they got reviews on it yesterday, but you're right about that. Depends on which article you read. I wanted to throw that, present it to the court, let y'all think about it and see if we need to go in that direction.
Well, just keep in mind from a budget standpoint, this is part of that money that we got. It can be retroactively spent, so all the things that we've bought so far, the machines that Carla bought and stuff, we're going to include that in the money that we receive from the federal government. So I'm not saying we should go out and just spend willy-nilly, but just keep in mind, this is not coming from our 2021 financial items. So I can see that if we vote machines and maybe if you have some multi-use computers, you know, like my computer in my office, I mean, me and Carla's room, one thing we get off. So, but like I said, I could say on a voting machine or something that you had several people coming in and using. And so we might buy a couple of those things just to see how well they work. The biggest thing also we want to convey to our employees is if you don't feel well, don't come to work and tell people you're not feeling well. Stay at home.
Don't come and vote or anything.
Well, that's what happens is they come. You know, it used to be a happy for employees to come when they weren't feeling well, you know, that was a sign of being a dedicated employee. But anymore, you know, once you come, if you are, if you do test positive, then you've infected the whole workplace. So if you don't feel well, call in and explain that you're not feeling well.
Or get tested.
And get tested, you know, if you continue not to feel well. But like I say, please encourage your employees to do that and just use common sense.
So how do I approve the buying the temperature? So are you asking to buy the temperature?
No sir, I was throwing it out, an idea that we need to consider and that's our possibility. The temperature sensors are relatively inexpensive. It's a, I looked at the one at the high school and it's a $60. It's actually very nice with, we have eight, I'm not mistaken, eight county buildings and we would, we would only need eight of those. But if you're also talking about the election polling places, then you'd probably need 15 of those.
Well, what I would suggest, let's give Jesse the authority to purchase the temperature deals of course, but also maybe a couple of ones. And if they come back and seem to be helpful and he wants to buy a bigger quantity of them, then he can come back and talk to the court. The problem is if we, if we go through, because we won't have another court for three weeks from today. And so we need to give him a little latitude in what he can do rather than having to come to court for approval because in the next three weeks he may want to work.
And I wouldn't be opposed to that, Jesse, if you want to get a couple of them or something. And also by the way, we've got lots of gowns left. If anybody wants to count that before they come to court.
So what kind of dollar figure would you talk about? Is it some $5,000 or?
Yeah, I mean.
On the temperature sensor. On the temperature sensors and?
Yeah.
The one or two UV wands, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I think five thousand dollars, we can cover that or less.
Yes.
Just for now, these are probably going to have to come out of that building. I don't know, I'm going to have to find this one for now, until we figure out what we're going to, what we're going to handle them.
I would think we just include everything in and we'll figure that out sometime in September.
And I'll do some more research before I purchase anything and I will get with Carla because she's great at that computer. She can find things a lot faster than I can. Y'all have any input or any other questions? Just, all right.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so we need a motion for Jesse to continue to pursue the P P E equipment. Give him a little latitude in his decision-making on what needs to be purchased and spend amount, I think it's eight, five thousand dollars. Do I hear that in the form of a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nell. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner.